I'd like to call to order the Eastlime Board of Finance special meeting. Today's Tuesday, March 28th. It is 6:31. We're here at the Eastlime High School. Thank you to the schools for providing us with this space tonight. We've got a lot of meetings going on in Town Hall. So this time of year, it's always tough to find space. But I'd like to start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who don't know me, my name's Denise Hall at June of Finance. Up here with me are Lauren MacMara, John Birmingham, Peter DeRosa, and Ricky Steele, all members of the Board of Finance. So the first item on the agenda is delegations. Delegations is the opportunity for members of the public to speak to any item that's on the agenda tonight. So I wanted to start out with just saying that over the past few days, we have received numerous emails in support of the budget and pretty much they were all very similar. So in the interest of time, rather than reading 35 emails, I just wanted to point out the names and addresses of the people who did write in to us. I assure you, all of us take this seriously and read every one. I tried to comment back just to let people know that I did receive it. But after having two hand surgeries over the last two months, I'm trying to keep my typing down a bit. So I apologize if it was just a brief thank you for your comment. So we had emails in support of the current Board of Ed budget from Jennifer Dennis from Canterbury, Frederick Wilson from Colchester, Carla Lloydovich from Deep River. Excuse me if I get name pronunciations wrong. Chris Majesik from Eastlime, Kim Herlock, Eastlime, Stacy Anderson, Eastlime, Shannon Sines, Eastlime. Mike Schultz wrote in. I don't know whether he'll be speaking tonight too, but I would say it was in support of the budget or against the budget. It just had lots of questions. Chris Majesik from Eastlime, Cheryl McGee from Guilford, Anna Alfred, Niantic, Lori Nickerson, Niantic, Lobov, Michelson, Gorshav, Niantic, Elizabeth Dumond from Niantic, Janine Barber from Niantic, Cindy Campbell, Niantic, Elizabeth Dowd, Niantic, Tiffany Hunt, Niantic, Bernard and Joan Dera, Niantic, Lee Sharon from Niantic, Judy Dowlin from Niantic, Brian Zonsteker from Niantic, Bethany Perry. From Norwich, Kelsey Melnick from Oldlime, Rachel Ryan from Old Sabre, Mary Beth Marshon from Old Sabre, Christopher Faulkner from Quaker Hill, Patricia Hesney from Waterford, Anthony Mays from Waterford, Megan Black from Waterford, Stephanie Brungard from Waterford, and Brian and Karen Zonsteker from Niantic. So all of those people were in support of the Board of Ed with the exception, as I said, of Mike Schultz, who had lots of questions. So with that, we have a sign up sheet. And if there's any members here that would like to speak in the interest of allowing this board to get to the business of tonight, which is to hear the Board of Ed budget, I would like to just ask everyone to state their name and their address and keep your comments to three minutes. Any questions? So now do I have the sign up sheet? Okay. So yeah, I'm trying to think. Well, how about if we start off with the people in the room? And so is there anyone who would like to speak? And do we? There we go. Not used to this room.
Hi, Tim Dowd, 66 East Patagansett. I'm here to ask the Board of Finance to adopt the Board of Ed's budget without further cuts. I do that as a parent of small children in the district, as a teacher at Eastlime High School and at Coastal Connections. This is my fourth year teaching here. It's 15 in total. And I would say the unique thing about teaching in this district is the number of colleagues I have that are products of this district. People who grow up here are mentored by teachers here. They want to devote their careers to Eastlime kids and give back to the town that raised them well. They're proud to be here. I think our town's proud of the schools as well. They certainly help our property values. And if you say you work at Eastlime High School, the first thing someone's going to say is, oh, don't you love it? As if there's any other choice. And I do love it, but I think it's fair to say that the last three years because of COVID have been the hardest time of my teaching career. And I think that's true for every administrator, teacher, paraprofessional, custodian, and most especially students. My daughter is a second grader at NCS. Her class had to enter kindergarten half on Zoom. They were on iPads rather than with their classmates. And this year has been the year that they've gotten back to normal. But they've gotten back to normal because they've had appropriate staff. The paraprofessionals, the great teacher she has, they are able to handle these kids and get them to where they need to be because of the right class sizes. And that's why when I heard the budget was going to affect her class the most, it really felt like a punch in the gut. We can do this if we have the right people in the schools. We can continue to grow our schools and keep them strong if we have the right people in the schools. You're going to hear the budget tonight. The Board of Ed, the administration, they worked very hard over the last couple of months to give you this budget. They looked under every rock they could find. There's not waste here. This is a rainy day. So I'm really here to ask the Board of Finance to use our rainy day fund for what it's meant for and make sure we keep our schools strong going forward.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Is there anyone else in the room that?
They're lagging out there.
I'm Mike Schultz. I live on Lovers Lane in Eastlime. After reviewing the Board of Ed budget at the object line level in great detail and the staff contracts as well, and I mean all of them from front to back, I had come to the conclusion that there is insufficient value added to the education for the requested dollar amount of $4.8 million. I repeat insufficient value. Even the proposed budget by the superintendent of 6.97% contains wasteful and extravagant expenditures, wasteful and extravagant. Many taxpayers are having difficulty paying for their needs, never mind their wants. And for that reason, I cannot support this budget increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, Brian Zonsteker, 65 East Patagansett and 88 Oswegoachi Hills Road. And these are my daughters Roxy and Ani, also NCS students and all that. And well, aside from what I wanted to say, I'm actually glad it's the gentleman before had a good point. I recognize I took one statement that he said that stuck out to me, which is insufficient value. And that's actually also what I came to talk to you about tonight because after all, this is the Board of Finance. So I mean, yes, of course, we can talk about, you know, the importance of education for our children and what that means to a lot of us and, you know, the current or future state of our town. But it would also be remiss if that we also didn't see this in another light, which is a purely fiscal light, which of course is the, you know, the main objective of this board. And so we don't want to be so naive as to feel like this should only be, you know, just think about the kids without considering that, you know, there's a whole town to run here. And I apologize. I sent actually a detailed letter to all of you today, but I totally understand that was this afternoon. My bad, I meant to do it a week before. I didn't get around to it. Sorry. So I understand if you haven't had a chance to review any of it, which is why I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. And also that, you know, what does fiscal responsibility mean, right? And I'd like to make the case too, that, you know, a big portion of fiscal responsibility is in the preservation of our educational resources. Again, not even just for our kids, but because it's just, you know, mathematically and otherwise, it just makes sense for a community. And, you know, I understand these are tough times and it's really tough even for, you know, for us to make the time to come here and do this or prepare these statements. So respect your time as well and understand that, you know, we're only doing this because we don't feel it'll fall on deaf ears. Just to highlight, just a quick couple of things that were in this letter that are especially from Dayton Studies coming from, you know, the government and other respected, you know, nonprofit, nonpolitical organizations, some from Connecticut themselves. Just Reader's Digest, right? For every dollar of public investment in K through 12 education, that results in almost $7 of GDP growth, the better part of $2 of tax revenue, you know, three quarters of a million jobs created over a sustained period of time. And that's, you know, per the study in 2020 Economics in Dollars. But that's really just a simple Reader's Digest, just a couple of quick statements that come from some of these studies such as, you know, teacher qualities are most important school-based determinant student success. Small classes are difficult to sustain while schools cut suspending and enrollment rises. Budget cuts make it more difficult to extend instructional opportunities because extended learning time generally adds cost. And these steps remove consumer demand from the economy. So that in turn discourages business from making new investments and hiring. Spending cuts lead to lower test scores, lower test rates, college enrollment, and these are also disproportionately felt by low-income students and their families. In short, I mean, the whole point is that sometimes cutting the cost actually costs us a lot in the short term and the long term for our town. And we're strongly imploring you to please consider supporting the superintendent's budget for this readjustment. Thank you very much. And these are the faces that are directly impacted.
Hi, Julie Horner, 42 Manwaring Road. First, I want to thank you for your time and work that you do for the Board of Finance. I'm a former student and a parent of four kids who were taught through the Eastlime school system. I'm also a teacher and have taught a variety of grades and students over the past 20 years. I am here to let you know that I want our schools and students to continue to perform at high levels. As you know, our town is known regionally and nationally for our high-performing students and schools, and this is what draws people and families to our town. My concern is that the budgets we have been put forward have been decreased by over 1.5 million in the past five years. I didn't have time to get the past 10, but I'm sure there's a lot more that you have cut. Our town is losing a little bit of its identity of excellence. Our students today have many emotional needs as an effect of the pandemic. When emotional needs are met, they're available to learn. Right now, we are in a crisis in our school systems. I'm sure you see it on the news. This week, according to CBS Sunday Morning News Report, they said the national data says we have an education crisis. Nationwide, our reading skills have dropped to the lowest in 30 years. As a result, unless we act for our youth, they will be less prepared to handle the academic demands placed on them. The town saved a lot of money for our schools since 2020. The ESSA and ARP funds gave us $1.7 million. We hired 14.2 positions and provided summer intervention programs for literacy and math. Due to time, I'm not going to read it, but these are all the people that were hired with those funds. The academic standards are much higher than they were in the past. When you were in school, when I was in school, when my four kids, who are now college and above, were in school, it's much harder. The things the four to six-year-olds do in kindergarten are harder and they're more complicated. This in turn requires sufficient staffing. And the staffing level for the kids can allow kids to learn in developmentally appropriate ways in all grades in our district. We need to keep the funding for our programs and the staffing at levels for the children we teach. We teach kids preschool to 21-year-olds in the AIM program, and that's our responsibility as a town. The town has, I know it's a new name, I don't know the name, but it used to be the Rainy Day Fund. In that fund, the town gets to keep that emergency account. If the town, if the school, I know I don't know the name, the process of this emergency account that schools could use if it follows through, those donations, the schools should be able to use as needed and keep it in a fund. The town keeps money in a fund, the schools should be able to keep money in a fund so that if it's needed, they can use it. It shouldn't be used to decrease and offset the budget. We should budget in a way to support our schools. As far as special ed, providing special ed services, this has been questioned recently. That is mandated by law. And if you don't support our budget, don't be fooled in thinking you're going to save money. More kids are being identified every day due to emotional needs from the pandemic and learning difficulties. When there's less staff and higher standards, they will be more special ed students. Okay. I'm going to just end with, I didn't get to say it all. I had a feeling I talked too crazy. The last thing was that our facilities, if we don't put money, it costs us more money later. This year, we have $75,000. So I'm hoping with what you saved in pandemic funds, you can put money back into Eastlime and reaffirm our commitment. And I'll email you the rest. Thank you.
Amy Ferrier, 91 Holmes Road. I'm a parent of a third and first grader at Flanders and a teacher in a neighboring district. Thank you all for being here and listening to us and hopefully supporting the Board of Ed's budget. I'm here tonight to urge you to accept the Board of Ed's budget. The Board of Ed heard the residents, they heard the teachers, and they put forth a budget that was truly children-first. As a teacher and a parent, I'm truly grateful for a Board of Ed that sees the importance in funding a budget that supports the quality of education that Eastlime deserves. While I know that a budget with an increase is not always ideal, now is the time to invest in our children. As you may know, the median sale prices in homes in Eastlime has increased over $100,000 in the past six years. A primary driver of property values is the school system. Now is the time, now is not the time to begin cutting programs and staff, which will have a negative impact on property values. If we do not pay now, we'll be paying later. In addition, the town of Eastlime, piggybacking on what was just said, has a rainy day fund or a contingency fund to use for times like this. This rainy day fund is 12.5% of expenditures of the town, which is a sign of fiscal strength for the town. The amount in this fund is over $10 million. Last year, the Board of Finance decided to use $1.2 million of this unassigned fund balance for capital projects and expenditures. Surely, if the town can invest in capital projects and capital projects, it can also invest in the children's education and the school system, and more importantly, the children of this town. This school system is phenomenal. This is why people move here. Like I said before, we pay now, we're going to cut the budget, we're going to pay later, we're going to lose properties, we're going to lose staff, you're going to cut these teachers, they're going to find jobs elsewhere. And this is why we moved here. My husband was born and raised here, and this is where we decided to raise our family. So I urge you to support the Board of Ed budget as is. Let the voters decide. This is up to them. Let them decide what they choose and what they choose when we go from there. I thank you so much for your time and dedication to all the people of Eastlime, including the children. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Finance members, and I first want to thank you. My name is Scott Mahon. I am the president of the Eastlime Teachers Association. I am no longer a town resident, but as you will hear and as many of you know, I was born and raised in Eastlime. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Eastlime Teachers Association. But before I do, I'd like to tell you how the Eastlime educational system has benefited my own family. I grew up in this town. My infancy spent on Roxbury Road. My adolescence in that historic red house on Boston Post and on the banks of the Oswegoachi River overlooking the Niantic River, where my mother still lives. I lived in Niantic for the first few years of my teaching career. It seems education is in the genes of the Mahon family as my father taught at the Coast Guard Academy. My own daughter is an elementary school teacher now. My brother and niece are administrators in nearby towns. My sister-in-law works in adult education, as well as several cousins and family members who teach all around the region. And I am proud that a new generation of my family has entered the Eastlime school system, my grand niece and nephew. But this is what concerns me now, because I fear that they will not receive the same excellent education that the Mahons have always received in this town. And that will happen if this budget is not accepted as it has been presented. I will iterate the same concerns I expressed to the Board of Education back in January, and it is that the cuts will have catastrophic and repercussions impact on our school community, beginning at the elementary level and extending through the secondary levels. Our elementary students receive a 21st century explicit instruction in the basics and ethics of technology. This is where they first learn that technology is more than a game but a tool, a tool that requires not just knowledge of how to use it, but of how to use it properly and ultimately ethically. I'm sure you've seen the reports concerning the use of AI in writing assignments, both in secondary and post-secondary schools. It will be much more difficult to navigate those ethical complexities without technology teachers. The educators in this community continue the hard work of repairing pandemic learning and remediating students' social development. More staff, not fewer, are needed across all levels. The social and emotional needs of our students are greater, and there are fewer opportunities for tiered invention. Mental health is an issue for students as in no other time in this town's history. When support staff are reduced, such as pairs in the classroom, that directly affects what the teacher can do in the classroom. What gets cut then? The reduction of elementary teachers as well? What will be the impact on numbers in the classroom? Again, there's a direct impact on students. The loss of support staff in our media centers will also have a major impact in supporting our students outside of the class as well. It's hopefully a bump in the road. Thank you. I've got just a paragraph. Hopefully, it's just a bump in the road, but there have been as many as 100 students in our library at one time, essentially reducing our staff to substitutes. I'm sure you understand that every budgetary reduction that is made will have a direct and immediate impact on our students. And I ask that you fully consider what that budgetary number truly means, that you remember that the success of this Eastlime community requires full investment in the educational lives of its children, and to provide anything less will be felt now and well into the future. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Isabel Georgian, 20 Bayview Road. I am a teacher, taxpayer, and a parent. I moved to Eastlime instead of any other town before I had kids because of the reputation of the school. And the reputation is well-deserved. But the problem with the reputation is that you can ride the coattails for a while, but if they're not maintained, a reputation, it's not going to last. Students must have resources and access to staff in order to keep this reputation. This budget must be passed without additional cuts so that this can be sustained. Our students need these basic resources to learn. The middle school PTA just sent out a wish list from teachers with items such as whiteboard markers and pencils because they need basics. The only resource I have to teach my new social studies curriculum are those that I've either bought myself or found for free on the internet. It may sound silly, but something as simple as glitter gel pens can totally change a student's engagement and how they learn. These are things that we pay for ourselves. Teachers and parents are already giving extras to students of this district. If students don't have access to these basic resources, we can't expect them to attain the education they deserve. If this budget is voted down, even more financial responsibility will be forced onto families and employees. The staff of this district are dedicated to the best education for each student and give beyond the expectations of a paycheck. An aide in my classroom has to clock out at 3:15. After she does this, she returns to our classroom and volunteers her time because she cares about students' learning. I severed where my spine and hip joint three weeks before the beginning of a school year. I was unable to walk, but I couldn't bear the thought of my students starting the year with a sub, so I popped those tennis wheels on my walker and pushed my rehab so I could do that for day one. This district has staff that give their personal time, often putting the best interests of students beyond the best interests of their own families and health. Yet, Eastlime is one of the lowest-paying districts in the state. Teachers have already taken pay freezes in the past to get us to this point where if a teacher steps over our town borders, we could make $10,000 a year for doing the exact same job. That's like giving up a house at the end of a career if you think of the additive costs of that. I live here because I know my children will have access to quality educators, but I can't expect to maintain that quality if it's not supported financially. I'd also like to offer some additions to the rainy day fund that maybe an educational side needs to be provided for that as well. I believe the Salem students' budget is included in our town budget, and again, I am not a budget expert, so correct me if I'm wrong, as well as when students pay to come into Eastlime, that money all goes directly to the town. So that's additive money for the town, yet in our budget, it's kind of, it's kind of feels like it's not presented to our town residents where Salem funds are actually added into that. So I apologize if that's incorrect, but that's what I'm understanding. So perhaps when students pay to come into our town, there's a budget that is set, an account set aside where that money will be able to be accessed by the school because it should be directly going to the school. The other side is that when new buildings, houses, apartments, complexes, townhouses are opened, as Lily B. experienced, that is an immediate impact on our classrooms where we are not funded for that school year, where we have an impact of new students. So anytime the town does approve a new building project, we should also have an immediate increase in our baseline budget, not what we're asking for for the next year, to cover the increased students that we are now shouldering. So I will wrap this up. We do have staff that care about education in this town, who give beyond what is expected. If you vote against this budget, staff cuts will be made. If you vote against this budget, the message that you will send is that you believe the staff do not do enough to educate our students and should shoulder even more responsibilities in their day. If you vote against this budget, you will be saying that our students do not need basic resources to learn and that staff should spend more of their personal finances to provide this. And a vote against this budget will say that students will be fine because we have a good reputation. If you believe that the students of this district deserve to have access to quality instructors and staff, as well as resources and materials that allow them to effectively engage and learn, then you will need to be their voice and vote to pass this budget so we can keep our reputation. Thank you.
My name is Bonnie Dembrowski. I live at 103 Walnut Hill Road. This is my daughter, Darcy. She's in seventh grade. First, I want to thank each of you for your service to our town as Board of Finance members. I know you're striving to do what's best for all of our taxpayers, and it's not an easy job. In these annual meetings about the Board of Education budget, the topics of class size and special education often arise year after year. We hear about the need to adhere to class size guidelines, as well as the prevalence rates of students in special education and the percentages and the percentages of our student populations requiring support. These are major contributing factors in the budget every year. I wanted to try to illustrate for you tonight what these numbers and percentages really look like in a classroom. So here is a classroom of 16 students. This is a typical third-grade class in our district, much like my youngest daughter's class at Flanders. If the budget is cut back to what was originally proposed by the superintendent, then next year, my daughter's fourth-grade class would have four additional students. And that's a lot of kids in a class, right? Even for plastic Duplo people that aren't moving or talking or running around. So you might be aware that 20 or 21 students in a fourth-grade class is within the historical class guidelines that are set by our Board of Ed, and that is true. But what I want to illustrate to you tonight is that the composition of that class size has drastically changed over recent years, especially due to COVID and other factors. Our classes are now composed of more children than ever with greater and more varied needs. So you will hear Mr. Newton explain that our special ed prevalence rate now exceeds the state average at 17.4% in 2021 and 22, and I believe it's even higher. That 17.4% is an average across the district K to 12. However, the rate for children with an IEP is likely much higher at the elementary level as kids are first identified with a learning disability or other disability when they are young, and many students are eventually exited from an IEP as they get older into late middle school or high school. So let's estimate that the prevalence rate in this fourth-grade classroom is closer to 30%. So that would mean six kids in this class have an IEP for such disabilities as autism, hearing impairment, dyslexia, speech impairment, specific learning disability, or other health impairment. Now, in addition to kids with an IEP, they're considered to be in special education. There are other students with needs who do not meet the criteria for specialized instruction but still require accommodations or modifications. I'm using Darcy's three minutes also. So they require modifications or accommodations to their curriculum under a 504 plan. Mr. Newton may tell you that the prevalence rate for students with a 504 plan is roughly 10% across the district. So in this class, that would be another two students who might have, for example, anxiety or ADHD. And then finally, you may hear about the 296 students who receive intervention services through tiered services. There can be overlap between these students with students already on an IEP or 504, but let's estimate that another 15% of this class is receiving math or reading intervention. I'm using Darcy's minutes. All right, so we're expecting our teachers to do more with less, and these are the kids in our classes that have these issues. And I'm asking you guys to please let the voters decide how we expect our single teacher to meet the needs of all of these students. So I'd ask you to please let the voters decide, because this is the reality of our classrooms today.
Hi, my name is Pat Hesney. I'm president of the Secretarial Union for Eastlime Public Schools. And we're asking you to support the budget as presented by the superintendent and the Board of Ed. In the past years, the superintendent has given back money to the town that resulted in excess money at the end of the year. So it's not like he's had some little private fund that he can just pick and choose what he wants to spend money on. He's been very fiscally responsible in the past. He's given money back to the town. And I think this budget is very fiscally responsible, especially in these times. 504 students and special ed students have exploded because of COVID. The secretaries see it firsthand in the front office, trying to find subs for teachers and paras. It's a full-time job. Kelly services, can't even keep up with the lack of staff to support all the schools in the area. So cutting paras would... I don't know how they would even find subs, because they can't find them now. So if you start cutting positions on paras and teachers and library aides, there's nowhere to get people to cover for these vacant positions. The libraries would be closed when the librarians were in meetings or out sick for the day. Students would not have access to any of those resources that they use daily. Hundreds and hundreds of the classes are in the library every day, and they bind the books. They save thousands upon thousands of dollars a year. Rebinding books, getting books back, calling students, and just daily running of the library, that would cease to exist because a librarian would not have time to do all these other tasks. The teachers would need the support of all the paras. Coastal Program is right outside my door where I work. I see these students daily with the teachers there. The interaction between the teachers and students is phenomenal. I just think the budget is fiscally responsible, and if you don't pass it and approve of it, that there's going to be direct impact negatively on all the students in every school in Eastlime. So please let the voters decide. Thank you for your time.
Hello? Okay, yeah, thank you. I'm Nick Menipace. I'm at 38 Hope Street in Niantic. I wanted to start off with a metaphor, because teachers love metaphors. And I know that people often look at this budget and they say, wow, this is all this money. But it's funny, because so much of the time, what it translates into in the classroom is it feels like we're being asked to do everything with, you know, a pair of shoestring and a pencil. And when you guys come out for it and say it's too much, it feels like you're telling us, well, you have two shoestrings, so you can probably do the same job with one. And as the Board of Ed stated with their budget, and as every teacher, parent, and, well, student has said, you cannot ask us to do more with less. And I speak of that, I'm not a teacher here in town, but I am a teacher. And you have built very successfully a reputation in this town as a place with great schools. And that reputation has taken decades to build, because you have invested in students. And if you choose to cut this budget, to ask those teachers to do more with less, again, you risk ruining that reputation. As we heard earlier this one, those class sizes are going up. That might not be the pleasant part to hear, but they are. There's more expense coming in. More students need support. And we're at a point that is unique. I don't know if we've ever truly had a point in the history of our country quite like this one, where we are being asked to do so much because of what has happened over the last several years. But as I simply said, you really do risk this town's reputation. And so much of that comes in through that you have built in for property values that continue up, that people that want to come here and raise their families here is because of how great these schools are. All right, thank you for your time. And I do hope you vote in favor of this budget.
Good evening. My name is Chris Myschak, and I'm a TA at the Eastlime Middle School, and I'm president of the Ask Me Para Union. I live at 78 Chesterfield Road, and I've been a resident of Eastlime for 27 years and employed as a para for the district for over 20 years. When my husband and I relocated from Michigan, we searched the area for the perfect town to raise and educate our three children. We chose Eastlime expressly for the excellent school system and its reputation for a superior education. I'm here today to urge you to pass the affordable and responsible budget put forth by our Board of Education. As a member of the community, I feel it is a civic imperative to provide the children of our town with a quality education so that they may be thoughtful, responsible, and engaged citizens of the future. This starts with having properly-staffed classrooms and libraries and up-to-date resources and programs which address today's learning needs. Since the start of the pandemic, there's been a sizable increase in the number of students referred to in qualifying for special ed services. As a TA at the middle school, I provide academic support to the 15 identified special ed students on our team. And recently, the special ed teacher I work with was given four new referrals. And if they qualify, that will mean 21% of the students on our team of 90 will be legally mandated support. This doesn't take into account the regular ed students who struggle with learning gaps brought on by COVID and thus require extra time and individual attention. The situation isn't unique. The learning losses brought on by the pandemic are now endemic throughout our student population. Student social-emotional needs have also escalated since the pandemic and are requiring more time to address both in and out of the classroom. From kindergarten to our senior class, kids are struggling with higher levels of anxiety, depression, bullying, frustration, impulse control, and lack of coping skills, to name a few. Regardless of our assigned positions, student employees show up for their students in multifaceted roles. On any given day, we are educators, counselors, confidants, advocates, social facilitators, nurses, disciplinarians, and safe, trusted adults. Each of us plays an important role in the lives of the children of this town to whom we have been entrusted. Maintaining our staffing levels will enhance the well-being of our students on many levels. And contrary to the gentleman who spoke earlier, each of us has more than sufficient value. Although the worst of the pandemic is over, its ugly effects still linger noticeably in our economy, but just as significantly in our children's rising academic and social-emotional needs. So as you wrestle with where to allocate our town funds, please prioritize the youth of this town. Make sure that they have the teachers, aides, and programs that are at the essential building blocks for equality education. If the budget is not approved, it will most likely result in cuts to these teachers, paras, and library aides and other essential staff, which will only serve to undermine our mission to prepare students academically, socially, and emotionally to be responsible, positive forces in our challenging world. Failing to invest now in our students in our schools will most definitely result in a costly future deficit. And I fear it will lead to a decrease in the number of families who choose Eastlime as the town in which to raise and educate their childrens. We must pay now, or we will pay later. Thank you.
I'm Mike Schmidt, 89 Lover's Lane. Like many parents, I was concerned that the initial proposed Board of Education budget slated once again to lead to cuts in staffing at Eastlime Public Schools, but this time more drastic than in previous years. This was understandably the reaction to inflation rates not seen in two generations, but nonetheless dismaying that the initial response in rising costs is to cut positions. Among many important thread roles were tech ed at the elementary schools, roles that focus on the larger picture of digital citizenship and ethics at a young age. While I am an engineer whose careers and personal interests are tech-focused, my concern as a parent lies beyond the practical application of technology and careers, but with the ability for kids to responsibly adapt to ever-increasing presence of technology in our everyday lives. Tech isn't just an accessory to life, academia, or a chosen career path anymore. It's completely integrated like never before. Technology continues to not only dominate communication, transportation, medicine, finance, and other fields, but it's taking over other areas such as social interactions, interpersonal relationships, and dating, and even constitutional and civil rights. Learning to manage your online presence at a young age has never been more crucial, and it cannot be viewed as an unnecessary extra in education. While I know the Board of Ed has reinstated these so far, I fear that they'll be far too easily cut should the Board of Finance seek to lower the budget for the sake of a more attractive-looking percentage rate. And what's an acceptable percentage rate? The proposed 8.8% looks huge by comparison, but we all know that's the result of a hand we're dealt. And how we play that hand is what makes our future as a town. For comparison, general inflation has been over 6% each of the last three years. Social Security's cost of living was 8.7% on top of 5.9% the previous year. Both numbers are larger than anything seen in 40 years. And our past Board of Ed budgets have not kept pace at the expense of our students. We need to honestly acknowledge that education is the engine that keeps a town like Eastlime running. I moved here 18 years ago as a single man with no kids, because I recognize that if I wanted to buy a home, it should be in a place that values education, because it comes with a sense of community and shared responsibility that makes this a great place to live. And as a result, I'm still here now with a wife and children. And now my parents chose to move here for an act of retirement, when plenty of other places could have cost less. But they wouldn't be here without a reputation built on good education, a reputation you can't look up like a bond rating, a reputation that spreads online, a reputation that I'm asked about by my young electric boat coworkers looking for a place to put down roots. Huge inflation is a bitter pill to swallow, and I know the Board has an obligation to keep costs in check, but we will pay for this one way or another. Reputation is much harder to rebuild than property, and if you no sooner cut off 50 feet of McCook Beach in the face of rising costs, don't cut it from our education, our community's identity, and our widespread recognition of being a great place to live. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Victoria Thompson, and I reside at 12 Laurel Street in Niantic, Connecticut. I come to you today as a proud mother of two young children, as a proud educator, and as a proud Cornelian. I'm not sure if any other Cornelians are in the room, but we like to boast about that. So I believe that you get what you pay for. Do you want to invest in education? I think we should. I believe in investing in education. I could throw out all the other numbers about the paras and the special ed and all these other things, but the truth is, you will never understand how hard it is to be an educator in a classroom. We can try really hard to convey that. You're always welcome to come see my classroom, but it is difficult for me to paint that picture. But you know numbers. And you are intelligent, well-educated people that have been elected to this Board of Finance for our community, and we elect you thinking that you are doing the best thing for our town with the money that we have. I urge you to let the town members be as involved as possible in making the decisions that we need to for education and how we are spending money for this town. I believe in investing in education. I believe in investing in the future of my children. I believe in investing in the future of our students. I want to go beyond needing pencils and paper and staples. I want to be innovative. I want to think and know that I am training kids for jobs that don't even exist yet. And I can't get that if we don't spend money on education. So please support the proposed budget as it is. So please support the proposed budget as it is. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Patrick Conaway from Three Goldfinch Terrace, Eastlime, Connecticut. And I'm a senior here at Eastlime High School. You sound like a queer. Are you trying to get bullied? Delete this or I'm blowing up your house. Watch your back. Just wait till we get back to school. I can't wait to shoot that motherfucker Patrick in the head. These are just some of the comments and messages I received during my freshman year of high school after posting a YouTube cover video. The support that I hoped to find from our school administrators was extremely lacking. And our campus safety and security officer told me you should expect backlash if you're going to put yourself out there online. Throughout my four years of high school, I have had my sexuality questioned and commented on regularly, been called the F slur by other students following me through the parking lot, been mocked and impersonated on social media, been harassed in class and in the bathroom, and dealt with constant daily microaggressions. I have seen each administrator on numerous occasions and talked to counselors and social workers weekly to report and discuss such issues. However, I have never once felt validated or protected by the administration. I'm a constant asset to this school as an active member of PRO, a student who sets up and breaks down each assembly or event, a class senator for two years, and a founding member of Project Step Up Eastlime. I've been shown as an example of an upstander and am the first person asked to tour new students. My technical and teamwork skills are called on extremely often by fellow students, teachers, counselors, administrators, and the Board of Education to oversee their meetings and events even now. I was one of few students chosen to be an ambassador for our Blue Ribbon School renewal. So when I have been bullied for my entire high school career and get absolutely no support from the highest authority, I feel used and taken advantage of. I need more support, not less. But having gone through all of this, I still feel that my educational and social experiences at Eastlime have shaped me into who I am today and who I will go on to be. And without the counseling department, nurses, social workers, and of course, the teachers who did support me, I would not be here today. So if anything, we need more of the support staff who changed my life, not less. And we should definitely not be letting it fall on them to carry our financial burdens. So the fact that the people who did get me through a grueling high school career would be hurt by any budget cuts to the Board of Education, I want to support them as they have supported me. Thank you.
Sophomore year of high school, I attempted to take my own life. Without the support of those people out there, I would not be standing here today. And while I did get the support I needed, it was not nearly enough. There are roughly, I believe, six counselors in our high school today. And yet, all of them are currently busy due to the high intensity of how many kids have lingering mental problems. If you cut the budget, you cut their paycheck. They leave. That goes to the students. The students don't get the support they need. The students could end up taking their lives. Their lives are on your hands. Do for them what you do for your children.
Thanks, Jeff.
For everybody who is in the public, there are QR codes. If you have over there access to the doc, you can scan the QR code right away.
Hi, Eric Baumann, Eastlime Board of Ed Chair. Appreciate everyone taking the time and really appreciate everybody coming and giving some feedback. You know, we've been struggling with this budget over three months, November, whatever that is, how it seems like a lifetime ago. You know, we started, can you go to the next slide? Thank you. Oh, boy. My eyes are not going to be able to read that.
Nobody's eyes are.
So, you know, when we started this budget back in November, December, and a number of Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen came to our budget workshops, which were, you know, we've been doing for a number of years. And it's been a great process that the Board of Ed gives us a chance, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, also see, how's, what's the budget looking like? If we roll everything forward, how's it looking? What are we looking like for the following year? And most years, it's in the six range, give or take.
Excuse me. I don't mean to be disruptive, but we all know this is an open public meeting. And we can hardly hear when speakers are here. We certainly won't be able to hear your deliberations and questions of the Board of Ed. So I'm asking you what you're going to do in the immediacy to remedy it because you've got a room full of people out there that have a legal right to hear what's happening in an open meeting.
Grant, is there a way to turn the volume back? Is there a way to turn the volume?
You could try putting your phone on airplane mode. That might eliminate some of the...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we thought the sound was fine.
Yeah.
It's all muffled. I mean, literally, it's just like listening to the teacher on The Simpsons for those of you that have ever watched that show, right? Or Charlie.
So we should all put them on one airplane mode?
So the way...
I'll let you know if it works or not.
Those aren't working yet, right? They're not working.
So has everyone put it on airplane mode?
Can everybody hear me? Does this work? No. I don't know how much closer I can make this. Is this better?
Is the volume all the way up on those levels?
Rich, move your thing closer, please. Yeah, I don't need...
Wait, it's on YouTube, right? So people could watch it on YouTube and still gonna hear it. No, that's what's showing up there yet.
What do you recommend?
I don't have another answer for you. The sound is working fine.
Is the auditorium still being used? Is that concert on?
I don't know if the concert is over or not. I'm not sure.
Could we...
Problem is, you're gonna lose the YouTube and get the mics.
So do we know whether on YouTube? Is that, I'm not a technical person. So is YouTube like a delay before it goes up? Do we know whether our voices are being heard on the YouTube?
That's what's out there.
That's what's out there.
That's exactly what's out there.
So...
We have a similar problem at that time.
So we had a microphone in a microphone. We took like another microphone and tried to amplify it. Yeah. We could potentially...
Put a second.
We could hook up the... There's speakers out here. We could potentially hook up. But do just... Put them back up again.
It seemed like they were carrying on tape before.
But it also just meant they were leaving.
It was very muffled.
I wonder if it's the setting.
Right.
Two different devices.
It can be heard at home. It's just one TV, I think, is disrupting some of the other ones there.
Sound check. One, two, three, four. Can you hear?
She's doing two. She said, I think it's good with two. Okay, we're good.
Good.
She's giving up.
Okay. We may have to load. And we can load up the...
Yeah.
We have times utilized one microphone between and people have been...
Unless you give Denise to emit her parades or something else. Maybe they can paraphrase it or something.
Well, you're doing all the talking right now, so...
I'm just working the recording secretary. Can they hear everything? Should I record someone's phones, please?
That's a good idea.
But they can hear five because our recording secretary is at home. Yeah, they just said at home. It's good at home? Okay. That's what we're born up to. I'm gonna record, yeah.
Can you still keep it on airplane mode?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I would record it because if she says she can't get in, I'm raising the airplane.
Okay.
Okay, let's give this another shot. So in normal years, when we go through the, we're at the workshop and we get our first roll-up of the number that Mariana, Jeff work on, we're normally in that 6% range. And that 6%, then we know Jeff, his team, everyone will do some work, get a little lower, so that's kind of the top point. And then work down from there. And then we do our deliberations and go through ourselves and ask some questions and fine-tune the budget. This year, you know, in December, the roll-up was over 10%. And I think, because, you know, the natural question is, you know, how did we get to where we got to? Because it's an unusual budget cycle. And as, you know, we asked a lot of questions as a Board of Ed, Board of Finance, you asked some questions as well, and the Board of Selectmen as well, trying to clarify, trying to understand, you know, how did we get here? What's driving? And you can tell, and you know, we've talked about inflation. We've talked about utility costs are up significantly. Healthcare costs up significantly. And those are the big three. It's inflation, healthcare, and utilities are big drivers of costs. And so we had to go through and started having discussions and saying, well, how do we, you know, 10%? We don't know how to manage with 10%. We needed, we know we needed a lower number. And we asked, normally, we give Jeff some indication of, well, here is around a number that we'd like to see from him and from the team. We didn't give him that this time. We just knew it had to be lower. And Jeff came back in, on the, when did you present? January 9th, thanks. Can't see near, I can't see far. On the January 9th, thanks, with the 6.97 budget. And which had 18 and a half role reductions of 18 and a half slots, as well as some other things. So we're not, there's no program in the 10%. It wasn't that there were new programs that we're introducing. It's not that there's all this extra new stuff that we're doing. It is just the facts of where we are in our, in 2023, healthcare costs, inflation, and utilities. Jeff came back with 6.97, which is the highest budget increase that he's ever presented in his time as superintendent here and previously. So as a Board of Ed, we had a chance to now say, okay, well, this is what it would take to get to 6.97. And we didn't like what the answers were going to be and what needed to happen. We heard from, as you have heard, we've heard from parents. We heard from students. We've heard from staff. We've heard from town folk about what they expect from Eastlime and what they're looking for from Eastlime School District. And I know, you know, my kids are out of the school district. They came through Willoughby Middle School and High School. And, you know, there's a certain reputation. I moved to this town for the schools. We moved from across the country. And when we asked, where do we go? And everybody said, you go to Eastlime. We didn't have kids at the time, but we knew we were going, we wanted to have kids, and this is where you go, and this is the school district. And we want to keep that, you know, I don't want to repeat because a lot of people said it probably more eloquently than I did and we've heard about the reputation and maintaining that reputation. And we want to avoid the erosion of our school district. And it's a slow erosion. It won't be overnight. It's going to be something that'll happen over years. And it's a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit the next year. And all of a sudden, your school district is not what it once was. So as a Board of Ed, we came back at the 8.89? 8.88? I don't remember. 8.88? As what we think is a budget to maintain our district at the level that our staff, students, parents, townspeople expect. Thank you, appreciate it. And Jeff will go through more of the details.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Appreciate it. Want to thank the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, Board of Education members that are here, and our full Board of Education, our administrators, these individuals that are sitting at the table here who have done countless hours of work through this process, all of our staff, everyone that's here tonight, as well as across our entire school district. Everybody has put some level of effort into this as we build the budget each year from the ground up. You know, it starts here in the schools and in the classrooms and brings up to Central Office where we come forward with numbers and recommendations and final adoption. So just to kind of do a recap of what Mr. Baumann just mentioned, you know, we started at the 10.3% all-in. We do our work at the administrative level to go through the budget, make the reductions, make reductions as necessary and looking at, again, that's everything into the budget. It came down to the 6.97. Clearly, as you just heard, we brought it back up to the 8.88 and put those positions back in because of the impact. And it was great. And that's why, that impact was great. And that's why you see that percent increase where it is. And that is the Board of Ed adopted budget, 8.88. Next slide. So in any budget, there are drivers. And I've said this numerous times in numerous presentations. There's three main drivers in this budget. The first being salaries. We have over 600 staff. We have many salaries. We have a two and a half estimated or average percent increase in those salaries. So that's the biggest driver, was 43.92% or a little over $2 million of the budget increase. There's also, there's also some collective bargaining work that happened with our paraprofessional unions. We value our paras and we settled on a contract with them. So there's a bit of an increase as well, which is part of that salary adjustment and increase. The second one is benefits. We've had a lot of discussion about benefits. Health insurance has been a wild card. You know, last year, it was 1.25% of an increase. This current year, over 10%, 10 and a half percent of an increase. That's a huge jump. Luckily, we budgeted 12% for next year. Luckily, as we all know, and those with the community that might not know, the state is now recommending that lower, down just over 7%. So in our budget, we had, without having all the data yet from the state, we left it at that 12%. So there is some room there for us to make some reductions to bring that health insurance, you know, number down. We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. But benefits is a huge driver. It's not getting any cheaper. The last one is operating expenses. And you've heard it a couple of times from some of the individuals that spoke this evening. Inflation really is hurting us all. And we're seeing it. The cost of almost $400,000 in energy costs, electricity, natural gas, heating oil, et cetera, operating expenses. That's a big number and not something that we all expect if it continues to grow. So those three areas are the major budget drivers which really push forward this 8.8% increase. The next slide. So. Thanks, Patrick. So if we looked at that, um, those increases and let's say if there was some adjustments, let's start with insurance. If we average, typically our insurance has been around 5% of an increase over the last, every years we've been with the state partnership plan. So it was 1.25 last year, 10 and a half this year. If you average that, sits around 5.875. So that right there would be a savings, dropping from 12% down to a 5.85, a $424,000. That's typically what it should be, uh, about 5%, a little over 5%. Assuming a 7.5% increase in inflation, there's another $250,000 there on anticipated costs. And then the impact of minimum wage. We've had to, because this, the, you know, we've seen an increase in what we need to cover for minimum wage increases. That's, uh, an additional cost to the district, another $225,000. Add those numbers up, you get 897, almost $900,000 in unanticipated costs or costs that are really out of our control. If we didn't have those, the budget percent increase would be 7.22, which is significantly lower than an 8.88. So I just want to put that out there of costs and, uh, mandates per se that, you know, we're dealing with that are driving, you know, this budget, um, that are out of our control. So, next slide. So when we think about shift gears to our educational focus areas, there's a couple of points that I want to emphasize. One is, you know, maintaining, and this, this is a, something that the board of ed, uh, treats very seriously. We have guidelines around, I mean, it's class size, making sure that we maintain appropriate class sizes across, uh, the district. Also, we've done a lot of work in trying to branch out with, uh, supporting students that might not be going off to college. Pathways is what we call, building pathways and experiences for kids, connections with the community, connections with, with town businesses. Herman's Garage is one that we've made a great connection with recently, where we have students going to that garage. They have a staff member though that oversees that and supports that. Reductions in staff would hamper and impact our ability to do things of that nature. So those are, are great components for kids that we're working to, to build upon. While also continue to build a, you know, a robust educational experience for, for all of our students, um, which focuses not on the academic side, not on the social emotional side, but together, uh, in supporting kids as a whole child. That's very important to me. It's very important to this district, uh, and very important to our board of education to make sure that we support the whole child as they grow and pass through our, our, their schooling experience here in East Line. And also, um, we heard, uh, from, uh, individuals this evening in public comment about tiered intervention services. Bonnie Dombrowski mentioned 296 students. That's accurate. It's just under 300 students across our district that receive tiered intervention services. That's a lot. That requires staff to support in a post-pandemic world, the students that, uh, are needing tier one, tier two, or even tier three, with the next level being special education services. Next slide. So I want to hit upon four areas of, you know, uh, the potential ramifications of any reductions below the 8.88. And then many of these, I guess a little of my thunder got stolen tonight by some of our, our public speakers, but, but that's exactly the direction that we were going with what we wanted to share. If you think about culture and climate, culture and climate, academics, uh, technology and social emotional learning, those, those four areas, and that's on this slide and the next slide. Culture and climate coming out of the pandemic has been a true struggle. We have battled to try and rebuild culture and climate and it continues to keep punching us down. Reduction in, in staff and not having supports to help build that is just going to continue to push, um, that further away. We want to rebuild our culture and climate. We want staff members, we want teachers, we want them feeling good about being in the classrooms. We want our students to be excited about, you know, their learning opportunities. We need the people and to give the people that are doing that work what they need to do it. So that's extremely important. Academic side of things, Mrs. Fazio, our assistant superintendent is going to talk in just a minute and show a little bit of data, but we have had a dip in scores. And we'll, we'll show those, uh, a little bit of, uh, that slide data. In a post-pandemic world, we need to make sure we are hitting it even harder with the work that's, and the efforts that are going in to meeting our students' needs. And there's that tiered intervention that comes into play to bring those scores back up to the caliber that we expect here in East Line, in the East Line public schools. So that's the academic side of things. And again, I mentioned the 296 students who are, you're receiving those tiered support services. I mentioned technology as, as well as social emotional learning. And in technology, we made a huge, huge investment, um, right before the pandemic, uh, in bringing the devices into the hands of every student. That, that's a huge undertaking and was a huge undertaking, but now it needs to be supported. We need to make sure that we have the staff, we make sure that we have the software, the hardware, to be able to continue to maintain the high level of operation and the integration of technology into the classrooms. It's not going away. It's only expanding. And we need to stay one step ahead of it and make sure that we're supporting the needs of, of those, those students and staff that are using it regularly in the classroom. Social emotional growth. We had, this is probably the area where we've seen some of the greatest concerns that have grown in a post-pandemic era. I'm going to show you a little bit of data on that. I'm going to go ahead and we'll go to the, the next slide. Mental health needs of students just continue to, to grow. Actually, let me just recap some of those, uh, those concerns, uh, as well, and then we'll show the data. So a, any of the reductions, um, in, in staff or lowering our 8.8 is going to be impactful in one way or another. We don't want to see that happen. We can't let that happen. We've heard it a couple of times and, you know, again, it was, it's right here in my slide. Mr. Baumann said it, Julie Horner said it. It's an erosion of our school system. And as each year has gone on, we work extremely hard to bring a fiscally responsible budget forward. And it's tight. The budgets are extremely tight. And this is a year where it's going to be higher and it has to be higher to make sure that we start going the other way with that erosion and turning it around, rather than continuing to deplete the programs and services and staff across our schools. The other impact, I'll just recap, you know, the things that are out of our control. You know, almost $900,000 is out of our control between, you know, the health insurance costs, the inflation, you know, and the minimum wage. So I think that needs to factor into, uh, to all of this as well. So if we take a look at some data on the next page, um, I want to go back to pre-pandemic time, where, or pre-COVID timeframe. So in a year's time, 2017, 18, our middle school crisis data, we had 72 total student crisis incidents. At the high school, we had 69 total student crisis incidents. There were 31 student risk assessments and there was 38 DCF calls for students. That's over the entire 2017, 18 year. There were also, when you look to special education, there was 83 student referrals to special education. Okay, so just picture those numbers. So go to the next slide and we go post-pandemic. We're going to look at this current year and last year as well, because last year gives us a full year of some data. For this current year, as of March 1st, middle school crisis data, already 67 student incidents and there's still three months of school left. And at the high school, we've had 90 student incidents of students in crisis and needing supports, therapeutic supports, counselors, administrators, teachers. 90 student incidents already as of March 1st. Take us back to last year. The student risk assessments and the DCF calls for students, those numbers have tripled. They were 38 and 31, now we're at 97 and 80. Tripled what they were back in 2017, 18. And then the referrals to special education, it was 83 back in 17, 18. Now we're at 124 referrals last year. So I, I've said it a couple of different times too with our special education numbers and it came up earlier. That prevalence rate, you know, is currently this year at 19%. It's higher than the state average. When I started here eight years ago, almost nine years ago, um, it was down around 13%. So our numbers have gone from in the 300s to just over 500 students. Denise, question?
Yeah, just while we're here, I hate to save them all for later. Could you just give a brief, uh, ex- exclamation about what is a student incident versus a student risk assessment versus, you know, just to give us an idea? Is this like a one time, something happened? Is this?
Yeah, so.
How do you break those three things out?
So it, it could be, you know, the, the need for us to go ahead and make a call to 2-on-1, send a student out of the district, um, because of they're in, in a complete crisis mode. So that, that's basically what, you know, the, the specific crisis incident is. A risk assessment might be that we're working with a student who's having trouble, having difficulty. We're trying to intervene and provide supports for that student during the school day. Might they come in and have a good day one day, might not have a good day the next day, but we're having to involve staff to support them. So those are risk assessments that, that would occur. So on the next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Fazio, who's just going to go over some of that academic video.
Actually going to take my mask off so that you can see me talking, I have a little cough. But want to thank everybody for providing me with the opportunity, um, to share out some of, um, the amazing assessment data that I'm really proud of. But at the same time, um, also identify, you know, areas that we, um, need to focus on, um, some of the impact that we're seeing as a result of the, um, pandemic. Also want to celebrate the success, success that we've had despite the pandemic as a result of the resiliency, um, of our staff and our students. So shine a little bit of a bright light as well. And also I'll provide you with a little cost analysis breakdown in terms of per pupil allocation, in terms of what, what do we, um, pay per pupil? And where we land in, in with regards to, um, our overall assessment from the state. So, um, just some, some big picture analyses. These were, um, bullet points that I brought to the board at my, um, summative, uh, academic data analysis in the fall. So, you know, we have overall experienced learning loss in East Line, just as many other, if not all districts have seen across the state and across the nation. We're actually seeing patterns of assessment in, um, grade five that have, um, uh, you know, sort of, um, wanted us to look a little bit further at what's happening with that transition from fourth to five. And the middle school has done, um, a lot of work at taking a deep dive and looking at that and identifying ways we can support our fifth graders, um, and their progress in their academic areas in grade five. As you have heard from many people this evening, both students and staff, a focus on mental health, relationship building, school connectedness, are all really, really important, not just now, but especially after coming back, um, from the pandemic. In our subgroups, we've seen, um, significant achievement gaps in certain areas that we're working to address, um, across all grade levels. Where we've identified that our student-centered coaching model has, um, supported growth in key areas. And, um, our East Line public schools continues to quite frankly, um, knock it out of the park in terms of, um, our science assessment scores, leading the DIRK. Next slide, please. I'm just waiting for Nina to catch up over there. So, um, this is, what you're looking at is, um, a trend analysis both in, um, or across ELA, math and science, um, from the years 27, 18, that's in the maroon, 2018, 19 in the blue, and 21, 22 in the gray. You'll notice that, um, 19, 20 data is not included as a result of the pandemic. And you'll also include that 17, 18 data is not included in science because we hadn't given that science assessment, um, the new, um, NGSS assessment at that time. But essentially what you can clearly see is that, um, that loss of learning that I had mentioned in the previous slide for both, um, ELA and math. However, in science, we actually, um, experienced a growth. What I do want to point out to you, um, and had, as I had said before, East Line's not the only district, um, in the state or across the country that is seeing a, a, a loss of learning as a result of the pandemic, but I do want to, um, to, to note that, um, despite this loss, um, East Line was fourth in ELA and math in our dish, in our DIRK in terms of ag- average, um, scores in ELA and math. So I would consider us a leader in our DIRK in those areas. In terms of growth, in terms of how our students grew, which is another indicator, um, we were third in ELA and first in math. And, um, I attribute this, um, to the fact that we make teaching and learning a priority here in East Line. We staff accordingly. We have the support structures in place in order to meet our students' needs. And we also introduced the coaching model to help our teachers identify, um, what gaps have occurred as a result of, um, learning loss and really targeting those gaps and making big, big gains in short periods of time. And that is, has been a huge collaborative, uh, effort across the district, teachers, students and staff. And I just want to share my appreciation to everyone in that area.
Yes, I, I don't remember as well, but could you explain the difference between growth and performance? Because our growth data sounds really, really nice. The performance, it, it does drop off as you mentioned, and yet the science is maintained. So I'm, I'm kind of wondering what's the difference between science and the language arts and the math?
So, um, let me start with your first question in terms of the difference between, um, the performance index and growth. So essentially the performance index is, um, the average score across all of the tests that are taken. And that is, um, students in grades three through eight and inclusive of our 11th graders who take the SAT. So the state has an algorithm, um, that they use to combine all of those scores and provide districts with an average score in all three of these categories. The growth is the, is the percentage of students who actually meet their growth target. So, uh, students have growth targets over, from one year to the next. And so, um, that growth mark is the percentage of students who meet their growth targets from one year to the next. Now you would, you can make an assumption as a result of the pandemic that we would see students, um, making bigger gains as a result of some loss in previous years. Is that, okay. And then in, in terms of science, um, you know, we're, we've, we really need to take some time to dig deep in, in terms of why are we seeing that increase? One of, one of the things that I think is a huge driver here in, in East Line is that in fifth grade, we have a core science curriculum that's taught. You know, students get, uh, 46 minutes of science instruction every day in fifth grade, um, as a result of it being a part of the ALMS model, which is different than, um, maybe, and they're, they're taught, it's taught by a certified science teacher. Whereas in other districts where fifth grade is inclusive of the elementary schools, um, they might not necessarily get that level of instruction and science that we offer here in East Line. But I would have to do a little bit of a further analysis on that.
Thank you.
So, um, I'm going to show you data in two different, same data, two different ways. What you're looking at here is just a table that represents, um, what's called the accountability index. So this is another score we get from the state outside of all of the assessment scores. Lucky us, we get an additional score. It's called the accountability index. And that is a combination of 12 different indicators that looks holistically at districts, more than outside of just their assessment scores. So we're looking at attendance, um, course offerings, offerings in the art, achievement, growth, um, college and career readiness, high school graduation rates, physical fitness. So you can, you can think of it more of a whole child indicator. And so, um, you'll see the accountability index, I'm using 2018, 19 data because that's the last available data for us at this point, moment in time. Um, and you can see East Line's accountability index, um, back in 1819 was 81.3 with a per pupil expenditure of, um, 17,754. So, you know, um, just above middle of the pack there. But if we look at it, um, a little bit differently, next slide, please. Thank you. This graphic, um, sort of takes the average of both, both the accountability index and the per pupil expenditures and divides. and the per pupil expenditures and divides it up into four quadrants. So the upper right-hand quadrant, quadrant one, would be schools that spend more per student but have a higher accountability index, and these are districts in our DIRC. Quadrant two, that quadrant in the upper left, is schools that spend more per student but a lower accountability index. Quadrant three are schools that spend less per student but a lower accountability index, that's lower left-hand quadrant. And the lower right-hand quadrant is where you really want to be, is the sweet spot quadrant, is that schools that spend less per student but have a higher accountability index. And you can say, see that Eastline falls within that quadrant. And so, you know, from our vantage point, we're spending competitively and getting really high-quality results. Are we satisfied with our results? No, we want to do better, and we will, but we need the resources in order to do that, and we need those resources to be sustained. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Davis. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. What you see, oh, go back to, yeah. All righty, good evening, thank you for your time tonight. I'm Kim Davis, Director of Student Services for the district. So I work at Central Office and support all of our special education programming, our student support programming such as English Language Learners, nursing, transportation. So I do more than just special education, but the few slides we have here tonight are going to focus on that. So our prevalence rates, as you have heard, have, for the first time in 21, 22, sort of passed the state prevalence rate just a little bit, by just about a percent. We don't have this year's data yet because it's based on an October 1 snapshot, so we'll get next year's state bar, you know, in the beginning of the fall to see what this year looks like. There is no doubt, however, that we are seeing a rise in both referrals to special education and qualification for students with special needs. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we wanted to talk about, it is really hard to see the big slide here. Is, you know, ways that we try to be efficient and fiscally responsible in special education. And one of those ways is the programming that we provide right here in the district versus sending a student to what we call an approved private special education placement. Some people refer to that as being outplaced. So when a student needs more programming in a highly structured environment that may be smaller than the public school, it's on part of a continuum of services in special education. And so being out of the district with only other kids who have special needs and no peers, which are other general education students, is the most restrictive environment a student can be in, aside from maybe homebound instruction. Being on campus with your peers in your general education classes, having experiences within your community, it's a least restrictive environment, you have a lot of access. So we try to minimize the number of kids that are experiencing this really restrictive placement for that reason, because then they're losing access to their community, to their peers, and to being a member of the community that they will ultimately be an adult member of. So we gave you a comparison by DIRC of how many students we have in out-of-district placements, which is about 10. It can fluctuate throughout the year, but 10 is a good number for us year over year. And when a student is placed in an approved private special education setting, that cost is significant. It can be anywhere from $75,000 to $125,000 just for the tuition. And then the district is also responsible for the transportation of that student to and from their home to that placement. So compared to our peers in our DIRC, we do really well. We keep a lot of kids in district in order to use those dollars more fiscally responsibly by spending them in our, on our kids here in district. We do that because we have specialized programming, which we call our specialty programs, that service our students that have higher levels of need. So students who may need more communication or behavior supports or alternate learning curriculum because of a disability such as autism. A lot of districts have to outsource for that programming. We have built an infrastructure so that we can keep children here with us. Next slide, please. So this further talks about those costs. We use an average of $96,000. Another example of this that you might know is Lern. They have a school in Waterford, which is one of our preferred options because they're nearby. You also don't want children to be on a bus for long periods of time. But $96,000 is about the average Lern tuition. And then transportation is, an average cost would be $28,000. We use our students for that when we can, sometimes we have to contract with curtain. It just depends on who has availability of drivers and time in their schedule. And below that is just some of the benefits, which I already noted, of keeping a student in district, which is the cost savings, the programming with your peers, access to the community and diversity in our student body. Our general education peers are then, you know, seeing students who are different from them and building that acceptance and empathy and flexibility, all those great skills we want kids to have. I think it's, do I have one more? No, I think it's, back to you, Mr. Davis. I'll leave that side. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last few slides, then we'll wrap up. Just a picture of our per pupil expenditures, both across, you know, this area, southeastern Connecticut, as well as across our DIRC. In both this slide and the next slide, we sit in the middle of the pack as it pertains to, you know, what we spend per student and for our per pupil expenditure costs. But if you look at, you know, the groupings that are above Eastline on both slides, we rise to the top as it pertains to our scores. So we continue to get a good bang for our buck here in Eastline as it pertains to, you know, quality of education they're providing our students. And that just goes right back to the fact that we need to maintain that. So I wanted to share this slide as well as the next one, as well as, you know, 24 districts in our DIRC, as I mentioned, we're in the middle, but, you know, we're at the top of that list as it pertains to scores. And then the last slide, last piece of information, I just want to, actually, one more slide just on capital, I'll turn to Dr. Lawrence for just a minute, but enrollment. There's a lot of conversation each year about student enrollment. This is projected out from this current year out to 2032, 33. If you look at 22, 23, that number itself says right now 2,562. That's low. We have 2,615 students in our district. We have never gone below 2,600 students in the district.
So what is the actual number of students?
2,615 is as of today.
Thank you, because it was a different number in different slides.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I'm bringing it forward, because again, these are projected. What, the good news is, you can see it doesn't change, you know, for the next 10 years. There's no deviation, but we're already sitting higher than what that number states. And it was brought up earlier as well with housing in town. We're starting to see some housing developments come forth. We already have one that added 20 students to Lilly B. Haynes. We have another one going up in North Bridgewater, 100 units. You could see easily 40 students come forward, you double, 55-unit, one that gave us 20 students at Lilly B., the North Bridgewater one is going to 100 units roughly. So that's going to add to our population, our student population. So I think that's an important point, you know, to make. And the other factor in enrollment is a component of, you know, okay, so a fluctuation over the last, you know, eight years between 2,800 students and 2,600 students. And every year it's deviated up and down. We have well over 200 classrooms across our schools. So that's less than one student impact per class. So there's no impact that, you know, we can say that, oh, well, you dropped 200 students, you should be able to produce that, you can't do that. There's zero impact across our schools because it's spread out across a pre-K to, you know, 22 age environment. So I just want to make that point because that's come up a couple times with enrollment. Heard it in different venues, we've heard it with Boris Leckman at our most recent presentation. And that has zero impact on, you know, what we're seeing and what we have to do to provide necessary support for kids. The last slide is just a depiction of the capital improvement plans. And I neglected, you know, when I introduced the team up here, Dr. Lawrence is sitting over here. He looked to my left, he's done an outstanding amount of work with our facilities and our capital projects. And we need to make sure that we continue to fund those projects to make sure that we don't bog ourselves up with, you know, all of a sudden having multiple projects or something large that goes down a boiler or something of that nature and stay on a recycled placement of parts and machinery. So Dr. Lawrence is here as well if we have any questions about capital items. With that being said, I'll thank you for hearing us and thank you for the community being here as well as Board of Ed and all the team members. Turn it back over to you.
Okay, and thank you very much. I'm hoping that you also have time for some questions from all of us. I know we had.
Yeah, we sent to the 20 questions that you sent, we emailed those back this afternoon.
Yep, got that, but, you know, I don't know whether everyone had a chance to submit their questions. I know, as you know, we've been busy going through budgets for the entire town and apologize to Jeff, we're just sending along my questions to him on Monday morning because, you know, that was the next one on the agenda, so.
That's what I'm looking at.
So I don't know whether I have some more questions, but I'm just looking at Lauren or John, or I don't always want to go first.
You go first.
First question I had was considering the money or the funds through American Rescue Plan. I know one of the funds runs out next September. And there's been several others that started in 2020. And if I'm not mistaken, I was looking at the sheet that was handed out by Jeff last year, and it looked like the total amount of money was, I'm going to say ballpark $3 million. How much of the rescue plan funds are left that are not used yet?
You said $3 million, I missed, John, what were you referencing for $3 million? Were you only?
It's a sheet that you passed out last year.
So the total. Yeah, okay, all right. So we, as of the end of this year, John, we have $813,000 that we're using this year. That's the end of that money, depletes any remaining funds that we have. So there's no more funding moving into the nation. So next year's budget has zero ARPAS or dollars in it because there are no more.
Okay, now, the staff that was hired under those funds, which, sorry. It looked like, you know, I'm looking at the figures, that the number of staff that was hired could be over 20?
No, that wasn't 20.
No, 18 and a half was mentioned.
Well, yeah, but that's not the ARPS or 20, or 14.2 or something in that. Around 14 staff that were hired with 20.
Okay, now, that, those people, the staff, are they under this budget now? When that money runs out, where do they go?
Some are, some are not. Some positions have been reduced over the last couple of years, others have not. Some of that is really in response to the questions that we sent back. We have that outlined in the questions.
So the ones that are not are not in the district anymore?
Yeah, correct, but some are.
Okay. Okay, another question I had was, you had a program, it was called Southeastern County Community School, and they no longer, Eastline, they're 50 now in Waterford.
Correct.
Not the staff at all, which are half down to 25 teachers in private ministry, where is that?
That has zero to do with our operating budget. That was a rental, they even rented our facility on Sunday. And they did that for a number of years, but they went to Waterford because they realized that they don't have to pay for the city if they further policy water. So that was totally, they would just pay us for the facility usage, custodial time, security time. Has nothing to do with our operating budget. We didn't stash that at all, it was totally a separate program.
Going into the object codes now. 118, related services, are there 12.94 percent increase? How many students does that affect?
So that increase, John, a bulk of that increase is, that's our OTPT speech services. There's additional funding in 20, in next year's budget for the extended school year program and then additional hours for DIRC that needed to be utilized during the school year. So it's not additional people and, you know, number.
How many students are involved?
A lot. So, I mean, we have, I would say upwards of 400 students work with the various OTPT speech providers.
And object code 121, substitutes, certified, how many are involved there as far as staff?
So those are our long-term substitutes, and that fluctuates depending on the need of staff is out on long-term assignments. So, I mean, I think this year, that's why you see it going up, we've had an increase in leaves. I, let me say, I don't know, 10, 15, it fluctuates throughout the year, I would say 10 to 15.
So these people who are on payroll on call?
Well, they're not on call, the long-term sub is an assignment that's over 40 days and you definitely, but you need a certification.
So let's say a teacher is pregnant, is wanting to be going out on maternity leave. If the substitute that is required is beyond the 39-day mark, then we have to hire a certified individual. The cost of those certified individuals has gone out. So hence we're seeing an increase in the, as well as the number that we have needed has gone up as well.
Now, does that involve Kelly girl services?
No, this is our own, yeah, beyond the 39 days, we hire.
And object code 126, the paraprofessionals, they're 1.89 percent. How many paraprofessionals do you have?
About 125.
And I'm not really sure what a paraprofessional is or does, could you just clarify that for me?
Sure, a paraprofessional supports students in the classroom, students with special education needs to access their classroom. When I was talking about the number of students that we keep in district, we're able to do that because we have a large paraprofessional staff that supports students with special needs to be able to navigate their school day, provide those behavioral and instructional supports in the classroom, transition with them to other school-based environments and things like that.
Monitor aides, that's a fact that went up a little over 10 percent. Now, you have teachers don't go into the lunchroom anymore, but when I was in school to monitor the kids. You have separate staffs that are called monitor aides that just do that?
We do, correct.
And how many of those are on staff?
Find out the exact number.
I mean, ballpark, you're talking a dozen, two dozen?
Yeah, probably, give me one second.
Probably, you know, 15 to 20, 20.
Yeah, there's probably around 14.
So roughly, 10 to 14.
Object codes in the 300, 300s, 320, 321, 322, 323, 327. Looking at the narrows, it seems to me that we have a lot of duplications on those five object codes. They're 1 up 18.279 percent for $187,000.
There's a lot of duplication, John, that we said.
Yeah, I mean, you have professional, technical, instructional services, instructional improvement services, pupil services, substitute services. Services, Pupil Services, Substitute Services.
Oh, six lines.
Well, not, not, yeah, those are all separate items. I, so, I mean, one, I have to report each year at the end of the year to the state. There's an end-of-the-year report. I need to separate the accounts in various categories, so that's not really a duplication. I mean, I can't combine Substitute Services with any of those lines over there. It needs to be separated out. Can't explain more on what the Pupil Services is. That's specific to Special Education. Instructional Improvement Services is Professional Development for our teachers and then Instructional Services, that is for our students. It's, I think, Project Go and something else in there.
Projects 46.
Yeah, and then 320 is just a small amount and it's just Professional, Technical Conferences, perhaps, that our central office staff...
Can I just follow up a question on your...
Yeah.
So, like, back to Pupil Services. So, looking at your budget actual, you have a projected expenditure as of 30th for 323 of $1,008,1832, but if I'm looking over here in Pupil Services, you're, you're looking at a budget of 616.
So, so the reason for the increase this year and why it's over 39,000 is we needed to, we were having a hard time funding staff, so we had to contract out. We are hoping that next year we don't have to do that and we would fill our vacancies in our paraprofessional. Yeah, that's...
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. The other, go ahead. The other object code is 437 projects. I'm looking at the narrative and there's a lot of items in that line item. Now, I'm going to assume you prioritize what you have to do with the money for that line, which is, went up like 820 percent.
Yep.
What was the biggest driver in that, that increase?
Dr. Lund, carpet replacements, which one do you want? All right. So a couple of the big drivers and changes to that project line. First of all is I broke out from other accounts, the amount of money that over the course of the last couple of years has suddenly, each year, a school does something, for example. A couple of years ago, the middle school got new channels. They ordered their channels, they had them installed, they didn't have the electrical system there to do the work, so they called me up and we put the electrical. And then another school might call with another project. So first thing I did this year was some of the changes. I dedicated each school with a certain quantity of money, so when these projects come up that are unplanned, unintended, we're not taking it from somewhere else. So that added quite a bit because it didn't exist previously. There's a couple of other projects in here that were just requested, again, trying to do some more all-in related work with project funds instead of waiting until there's a problem later. So, for example, and then some other things came up, which you like asbestos, having asbestos issue to deal with in central office still because we had other issue that spent our asbestos funds last year in central office. So, a number of these little projects, also, and I'll get to carpet in a minute because that's always been an interesting conversation. Repairing, regrading patios, replacing lighting, stage in middle school, converting some folding walls and fixed walls that paint because these bathrooms, the folding walls just don't have the sound attenuation needed for those spaces anymore because of those occupied spaces. So these add up in carpet. There's a lot of money for carpeting because we have, the middle schools have had 23 years now and have the carpets original and just starting to replace it year by year by year. And this is, will be the third year that we've done it, so this has been ongoing. There's carpeting here at the high school, that's 40-plus years old, so that's ongoing, so that's done to be a year, two or three now that we've been doing that, so that's recurring maintenance work that needs to be done.
So I noticed the percentage is high, but if you look, look at the dollar amount, it's 12,500 on projects. So that amount, money will cover the projects you listed?
No, it's 1,200.
Am I looking?
Yeah.
Sum total.
From 15 to 139,000.
I don't remember on page then. That's all I have at the moment.
Okay. In regard to the paraprofessionals, it's my understanding that the school has a legal obliga, that there's not wiggle room with the number. We have a legal obligation based on student needs to verify the paraprofessionals.
We do. There are, we, we are fortunate to have, you know, some latitude in our paraprofessional cadre that every single one is not tied to an IEP, but as our numbers have increased, more and more are. So that flexibility is narrowing significantly, but yes, a paraprofessional could very well be part of an IEP, as well as those OTPT speeches that were asked about before, that's a related service to students in special education.
And then, let's see, John had a few of mine. For object 641, the literacy mandate, was that for K through 3? Was it that mandate?
Yeah, well, it's, but the number reflects a K-5 adoption.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I read, and this could be completely wrong, that there's talk of pushing the start date for that for a couple of years, but if that is true, would we wait to initiate that program or is it needed now, something that we feel students need?
So we are, we are in need, we are in need of a primary resource for literacy, K-5. However, that process is one that we take very seriously. It takes time and we are, you know, we are in, we're on that journey together right now. Many of my colleagues in the room outside are a part of that. So the, the short answer to that is yes, we do. However, the timeline is still a little bit up in the air and in terms of the legislation as of right now, the legislation is requiring us to adopt, Eastline had put in for an extension, so we don't have to adopt next year, but as it stands right now, we do have to adopt a primary resource by the 24, 25 school year. That may change. I have also heard that as well, so, but I haven't had any official word on that.
Okay, great. That's for me.
All right. Maybe I'll just keep going down the line here. So, starting with my questions that we talked about, yes, I receive your updated projected through the end of June 30th. Thank you for that. And that you don't anticipate any other expenses nor a need for any additional appropriation. So you feel that you have worked off that $700,000 deficit from earlier in the year?
Yeah, I have any emergency expenditure that could come forward, which we hope it doesn't.
Yep. I asked for information in regard to the towns in our DURG and the Board of Ed budget increases, so you've provided that and I've shared that with everybody as to what all the other towns are asking for in the area. I also asked for the minimum budget requirement update. I, I know you had provided that to me a few months ago, I wasn't sure in the timing of that. So at this point, we're still looking that we're in excess of 2 million above what the minimum budget requirement is. Okay. I asked about the contract with Salem and I know that you had said that they didn't have to contribute to any capital expenditures, but I went back and I, I looked at the contract again and I'm looking on page 10 and, and it basically does say that in preparation for, should any capital projects such as building renovations, additions, or construction be necessary for the execution of the terms of the agreement, Eastline should notify Salem of the need for such project. Says a statement that the project is necessary to fulfill the agreement and a willingness to pay for a proportionate share of the costs of said project. So it, there's a number, I don't want to read the whole thing off, but it does seem to me that this allows for us to look to Salem to say, if we're doing some capital improvements here, that we have the ability to go to them and ask for them to pony up.
So they, they have, for example, when we did the renovation of the high school, it was a bonded project, they did pay a proportionate share of that bonded project in addition to their tuition. So when you said capital, I thought you meant like our capital, our everyday kind of capital items, but should we have to do some type of renovation to the high school? That's at least the interpretation that I have, then they would obviously be...
So like for the swimming pool, they, they...
Yeah, they paid, yes, they did.
At the time when it was built, yeah.
Correct. I think right about when I started was when they finished making that payment. I forget how much it was. And that went directly to the town, no?
I just, you know, with a, this is a 20-year contract, so it, you know, I just want to make sure we're understanding all of that. And so right now, what do we, what do we use as the cost per pupil for this budget versus what we get from Salem per student in this upcoming?
The, what we charge Salem?
Yes. I know they back out transportation.
Yeah, they're, maybe they're assuming, I think it's 15, 15,400 something maybe? Pull up the contract. Do you have the contract there?
I do.
Oh, okay. The numbers you're referring to.
No, she was the Salem agreement.
Oh, sorry.
She didn't have my calculation.
Yeah. Because I, you know, obviously if our cost per pupil is going up and they're paying 15 and it sounds like we're using 20...
It goes at 5% every year, just their, their cost.
Their cost, yeah. Well, 2 and a, it's 2 and 1/2 percent because we're in a two-year line.
Oh, that's right, sorry, two-year line, yes, 2 and 1/2 percent.
So I guess my point is, if our budget is, if you're projecting or asking for an 8.88 percent increase, you know, how does this relate to what we are getting from Salem per pupil?
So, so for the 23, 24 this year, and I can send you, there's my recalculation, there's a document, we voted on it in January.
January, yes.
So the tuition for 23, 24, which is next year, for a regular ed student is $15,329. For a special ed student, it's $31,912.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the, for high school, so I isolate the hospital, because obviously they want to pay for it.
All right. And so then my, my next question, and I know you alluded to this earlier, Jeff, but I really do want to understand and drill down on the healthcare calculations, because if I look at the fiscal year projected expenditures, 7,311,000, and in the budget, you're asking for an increase of $1,233,860, so $8,544,905 in the budget. So if we're actually looking at the difference between the projected and the budget, that's a 16.88 percent increase. And I know we want to be conservative after this past year, but given that we've gotten feedback from the state that it's just a little over 7%, even if we used an 8% increase, that would be $7,895,929, which would mean we could reduce that number by almost 649,000.
You want to explain that?
Yeah, well, so, so you're using it based on the, my projected, my projection. There's other things that are included in that health insurance line. It's not just health insurance. It's health insurance, it's payment, and there are some groups that receive a payment in lieu of health insurance. There's, there's life insurance, there's dental, you know, so there's several. And there's a buffer of three employees, like, because I, what happened this year, which contributed to our issue, is that we had, we had several employees that either changed their status from two-person family or from single, single person.
But that's sort of built into our projection already.
I built that in.
I would love to see the details on that.
I have my projection sheet, I'll send it.
And, and sort of the breakdown of like the cost for, you know, how many do we have using the single insurance and what's the cost per single and then how many are two and family?
I don't have it broken out that way. I have a proj, I project the health insurance based on what we pay this year and then I use that number and use the new rates I, based on our total health insurance. I can send you that calculation.
Okay, thanks. It's, being a numbers person, I'd like to see the numbers behind everything.
So my calculation is we can probably, based on the, the new rates, reduce that by about $400,000, about 618.
So you think you can reduce the $8,544 by...
$400,000.
$400,000. Okay. And then, could you just, because there's...
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, the other thing that you have to add on to there, because I'm like, wait, I know that's, the number's not right. A portion of the benefits, and I'll, is about 160 or 70 of the health insurance was charged to the grant, to ops, there's eight and a half positions this year that are charged to the grant that, as from where we brought.
Yep.
Some, their benefits was also charged to the grant. So that 7.3 million is actually 7.5 million something, in total. Next year, obviously, we don't have any grant funds, so in addition to the operating budget, the, their benefits have to also be charged to the budget. So does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So our total health insurance cost is over 7.5 million. 7.3 is being charged to the operating budget. You don't see the other 160, 170,000 is being charged to the grant for this year.
Great, okay. And then just because I feel like I have so many updates, so right now, in this proposed 2024 budget, what is the exact number of positions? I had the proposed of 493.07 for total staffing. Is that, what is the, is that the right number of total...
I don't know what you're looking at. You're talking teachers, parents.
FTEs. I'm just looking for the total number of people in the district that's in this 2024 budget.
I can go back and just try and calculate.
Okay.
So tot, so total staffing.
Total staff in the district.
In the operating budget.
Yeah.
Are you just wanting FTEs or...
I want the total.
PTs as well?
I want the total number, so...
So you're, yeah, you're talking FTEs and parents and, yeah, total staffing in the operating budget.
Charity, everything?
Yeah, security, that's...
The whole, how many people work in the district? And, and, you know, because it's, it's like, I'm so used to thinking FTE is full-time employee, but are you using full-time equivalent?
Equipment, yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's, some of it is semantics, but just trying to understand, because, you know, you look at this, it says Eastline Public Schools, you know, FTE staffing, but I'm just trying to get, how many people and how is that number of people who work in the district, how has that changed over the last five years, like totals? So then, I, I know you attempted to answer, maybe my question wasn't, wasn't phrased correctly, but like, are there any other sources of revenue besides... but like, are there any other sources of revenue besides the grant and town revenue in the book? Do you get rental income from anything? Do we charge anything for?
I have sent you, or that we had included, so we, yeah, before and after care. We have a before and after care program. Right now, this is the first year, and I just have one entity right now that is renting some gym space, not a lot. We, most of the gym spaces are taken up by either, either the youth groups in town or parks and recreation, so there isn't much space available for, you know, people that would pay. So we haven't, and then with COVID, things kind of, our, the Chinese school was a major source and that isn't, you know. But we have before and after care, we have a creative place school program, we have an integrated preschool program, and then we have what, Flanders School and Nova Super High, like a preschool.
So those are all sources of revenue that, that we haven't budgeted anything for that in this?
No, those are, those are, like, an enterprise, they're a special revenue account. They, they fund, revenue comes in and it funds the salaries, the program expenses, and then I think as we noted on the sheet that was sent to you.
Yeah, I think it was blatant, yeah.
A hundred thousand dollars to offset this year's deficit.
Okay, so that doesn't appear anywhere in here?
No.
Okay. And then, so then I asked about where in the budget the cost for the, the cyber fraud was accounted for? And you said.
Still working on options with that, but the plan right now is to embed it into the contract over the next couple of years, potentially reduce engineering time to make up for the, the total cost. That's what we're looking to do, so it's not a one large hit.
Okay. And then, another question that I hadn't had time yet to ask you, but if I look to budget by actual in the three-thirty, in the other professional and tech services. So this is, I believe, so under nursing, we've got six hundred and eighty-eight thousand was for the twenty-two, twenty-three. We're, we've expended to date, two hundred and fifty-two, but we're looking to go to six hundred and sixteen again. Could you just maybe walk through what's going on with that? And how many nurses and do we have and?
I'll let Kim speak to that, but the reason why you don't see spend to date, to date is their, or like, their billing is fine. So they have not, I believe that probably just reflects December's bills. We've just got January and February. So when you're looking at that, it's as of when I ran this report, so you don't have inaccurate number on that. So it is, we'll be closer to the, to that, to the budget number.
And so, and how many nurses is that?
Yeah, we have five registered nurses, one in each building, and then the Levy Haynes, the middle school and the high school each have a help aide to assist the nurse with traffic and the health office, so. And those are all contracted through Visiting Nurses Association, VNA.
And if we looked at the difference between going through the VNA and just hiring like them outright, just curious.
Nursing supervisor to oversee that, as well as trying to find a nurse, it's a nightmare. We have talked about potentially combining with other districts, maybe, having one nursing supervisor overseeing the two districts, but still the concern is without having a vendor that is, has regular nurses subs available, we have running issues.
Okay. And another question that, actually, it came up as I was looking at Mike Schultz's evaluation. Under salaries and benefits and increases, there's, they mentioned annuity, annuity payments for non-annu-, could you explain to me what?
I haven't seen Mike Schultz's evaluation, so I have no idea what you're referencing.
Oh, okay.
Just to.
He, he did a breakout of salaries, and I think he may have left already. Okay, here we go.
Administrators' salary, and then there was an annuity payment, and then transportation and something else, but the, there was an additional annuity to what the base salary was.
In the administrators' contract, which is available online, there's a component in which, in addition to their base salary, there's a contribution to a four oh three D plan. And I believe it's, I don't remember off the top of my head, it might be four thousand.
That's how, four thousand, forty-five hundred dollars.
I don't know anything.
And so.
If you know that number, that annuity, that annuity number, I don't.
Is it forty-five hundred?
Yeah, I think it's forty-five hundred dollars. It's going up about five hundred dollars a year.
Yeah.
Which, that's part of your overall salary, yeah, so when you compare districts.
Yep.
Without that, you're way lower.
Exactly.
Okay. And then I just saw, he saw, mentioned that travel increased from twelve hundred to five thousand. So I'm just curious, is there a lot of travel you're looking at?
I, I don't know who, what he's, is he referring to?
Yeah, was he?
So I have the mileage reimbursement line, is that what he's referring to?
We can, we can, I'm sorry.
Maybe you can send us whatever you sent you, we can take, look at and compare, because I, I don't want. Without evaluating that, I won't respond to something that we don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. I know he said he sat down with you and looked through all the contracts and stuff, so that's, I just want to.
I've talked to Mike a lot, but we've not sat down.
So I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, we get, we get answers. And then, then I just have sort of a open-ended question of, you know, I know that in my past experience in a different town, one of the things that our HR director would put together was, here's all of the things that make up all of the union contracts that, you know, because we, we talk about fixed expenses, things that you have no control over, and a lot of those things are all due to the collective bargaining agreements. And one of the tools that I found very valuable was it would break out in a single document all the different union contracts, all the things that, you know, whether it's increases, whether it's how much they're putting towards pension, what are they matching, all of that. And that there would be a discussion over what are the things that we're going to attempt to negotiate in the future to help address, you know, rising costs throughout all of our, you know, when we say salaries, expenses, everything like that is the biggest thing. So, you know, how, how are you looking at what you want to address next and, and try to move that needle?
Well, we go, we don't have any HR director, but we go contract by contract, and oftentimes, you know, our attorney brings all the data, you know, to the table, and we look at, you know, where bargaining group is against, you know, the region. As you heard tonight, teachers, you know, are on the lower side of pay administrators. So I think that's a continual discussion, you know, per contract and when each one comes around. But I, at this moment, you know, I have a list of what I'm looking to, you know, reduce from, you know, from a, from a contract.
Not necessarily reduce, whether, you know, there's things like, you know, hybrid, defined contribution, defined benefit, there's different ways to find savings. We, we moved towards operating SA accounts and high deductible plans.
We used to do that, yeah, we wanted, went to the state partnership plan because we had like a twenty-four percent increase of, you know, years back. Thirty was thirty percent increase, so that's what we, yeah, I mean, that's an area where it's, I think you're right, we continue to look at, you know, the costs. I think we're monitoring the state partnership plan pretty close. You know, again, the seven percent, we're thankful that it went down to seven percent. Seven percent is still high. It should be, it should be lower.
Yeah.
So I think we, we need to continue to do our diligence as a town and Board of Ed and districts, you know, collectively, because we're in it collectively, you know, to continue to, to look at options.
And I, I think one of the things we had spoken about with Mr. Siri and, and Kevin Gervais, our finance directors, coming up with a, you know, a longer-term capital plan. So, you know, we see what's just up in this budget, but planning together as a town and Board of Ed on, you know, what are our long-term, you know, capital needs in terms of the big projects that, that you're looking at. And so I would just very much like to continue to pursue that idea, you know, working together, you know, perhaps in the fall, having that capital committee or something where we could work together on that.
Ten-year plan, we meet with Joe Berga, and, but that's a good idea, sit back down some more and continue to look at that ten-year plan.
Yeah.
That's out, that we have, it's out there.
Yeah. So with that, I know I've monopolized a bit. I suspect I may have more questions than, you know, over the next few weeks as we finish up with the town, I'll, I'll continue to kind of look, but I need to, yep, sure.
Which, yeah. I didn't want to interrupt you, and you're, the first, you were talking about the DIRD, getting the DIRD rates and the rates of increases. So I just want to make sure everybody understands, because I've been in a lot of Board of Ed chair meetings, trying to understand everybody's, it's pretty complicated this year. Some, some districts still have ESSR funds, so they've reduced their, their numbers look lower because some districts have gotten, got a lot more ESSR funds than we did. So, so something you have to look at. And then some health, the healthcare rate is very different by districts. Again, you can get somewhere at like two and three percent increases. What's in there now for us is twelve, even if it's seven. So you're seeing, so some of the things that may make it a little more challenging to compare, whether it's DIRD or southeastern Connecticut, whichever way you look at it, just be aware of that. So it's still good information to have, but aware that especially ESSR funds makes it a little more challenging, but the healthcare cost is pretty variable amongst districts. Thanks.
Peter, do you have any?
I have a question. And it's kind of a broader question of out of the questions we've asked in either detail. On this slide with the proposals, the, the initial proposal from the departments was ten point three percent increase, and then you brought it down, you brought it down to seven percent, and then after some input, the Board of Ed brought it back up to eight point eight. What, and I thought I heard, and I'm sure it's in my notes here, that from the initially, initial budget down to seven percent, that there was eighteen positions eliminated to bring it down?
There was, yes.
What was added to bring it up to the proposed budget now?
The eighteen point five were brought, put back in.
Okay, what was not added?
So that was supplies.
It was supplies, some cuts in equipment, there was a reduction to some part-time salaries.
Some facility reductions.
Yeah, some facility, yeah, there were, it was throughout, reductions throughout the, you know, throughout the schools and various departments.
Correct.
Correct.
Cutting back.
Correct.
Okay, okay. But there's eighteen positions carried through.
And benefits, correct.
Eighteen point five, yes.
Eighteen point five, okay, okay.
And, and of those, eight and a half of them had been funded by the?
By the, by the, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I want to thank you, Jeff and Fran for your diligence and for answering many questions that I had submitted by email after ten minutes. I, I've just got a sixty thousand foot question. We've heard through many testimonies at the beginning of the meeting, through delegations, and it seemed to be the theme throughout the presentation, that if there is reduction beyond what we see as potential insurance savings, that four hundred K approximately, that if the budget is reduced, then that means that staff will have to be reduced? Or would there be other ways to achieve some reduction, reduction of staff?
I think it's still too early to tell. I mean, I could say one thing one, you know, now, and then somebody could move to Alaska sort of thing, and then a position opens up, we have to fill that position. At this point, the positions that we have are the positions that we, we need to fill.
But, but essentially, if the budget is reduced beyond what we anticipate the savings for insurance.
Yeah.
We would most likely more than not have to reduce staff.
Positions or bodies, there's a difference there. If it's bodies, we have a, well, if it's bodies, we have a little bit of room with, we've got a couple, two retirements at the elementary level, we've got a middle school retirement, so there's a little bit of in that, but it's not a lot, because in a given year, we have tied upwards of seventeen, eighteen retirements in a given year. The last few years has been very minimal. We're in kind of a downward curve right now for retirement, so.
But, but if the needs are, as what I was hearing for the students, if you had a retiree, you would replace that so that you could meet those needs?
That's a position. Yes, a body would fill that position.
It would be a newer body, but there would still be the same number of sta-, you, you would still need the same number of staff.
There you go, yeah.
Okay. And then with, with reducing the deficit this year, because it started way up there and you've done a monumental job in, in cutting it down, are any of those strategies potentially of use for next year's budget?
I would say no, because the impact was so great, you know, teachers, like you heard tonight, they gave out their buying their own supplies, you know, we took a hundred thousand of revenue, which means now the revenue programs have less to work with. So that was a significant impact on the district this year, and we just, we froze everything. And, you know, kudos to our teachers and staff for purchasing, hiring freeze, so we had impacts. There's where a lot of the culture and morale and climate has really deteriorated because of a lot of that, those, those things that we froze.
To that regard, with the hiring freeze, is next year's budget anticipated to fill those positions that were frozen this year?
Yes. Yeah, correct, yep.
Okay, okay.
A lot of those are just in the paraprofessional world too. Number that we didn't, we didn't hire, but we made a lot of sacrifices which did not benefit kids.
Oh, okay. And this is just a curiosity question, since the Chinese school was, was mentioned. How much revenue did we lose by them moving to Waterford?
Twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-eight thou-, twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, so not a significant.
And that's something we're, we're looking at in our policies for facility usage. See, part of the problem is, you know, we, we've talked about this in the past, if a parking rack, they use, and town, across, whatever, they use so much of our space, so it's hard to have auctions to freely rent out, plus, you know, you charge that facility usage fee. So if I'm the Chinese program, I looked at Waterford, and their policy says because they're nonprofit, they don't have to charge a facility or pay a facility usage rate. Huge savings for them, so up and they, they left.
Do you feel that we, we gained something from the school being here besides that twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand dollars, all the math awards that our students won through the years?
Well, I mean, it was a great relationship that you had, you know, with them. You know, there's still some of our students that go to the program, so that, that didn't change, just the location where the program is, but it was a nice relationship. But, you know, again, money talks.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, my, my biggest question was that sixty thousand foot, because you answered all the detailed ones that sometimes repeated tonight.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
We've looked and analyzed it a fair amount, so the relationship was phenomenal. It was great having met us at the school, full stop. I mean, and I think we enjoyed and we benefited from having you here, no doubt. From a pure financial analysis, it was at best breakeven, because on Sundays we have custodians, we have to have security. Sometimes we don't have, we wouldn't always have them in the school on every day, and I think they get paid overtime or it's significant, it's on the overtime. So when you did the analysis, which we did do, was question at best breakeven, at best. Now Waterford's offering, basically they're doing it at a loss. If you do a pure financial analysis, they are doing it at a loss. So we. So we lost twenty-eight thousand in revenue, but we also don't have the expenses that correspond with that. So I just want to make sure that, but the relationship was very good.
Yeah, thanks, Eric.
I lied, I said I was done with my questions. Sorry. Now, this had just occurred to me, as we were talking about this, and again, we've talked about it in the past, the idea that you're working towards setting up some sort of like foundation for Eastline Public Schools. Do you have any like update on that?
Yeah, so it's in the works at the state to, to get the approval for the five oh one C three, but that's not going to come to fruition probably until the summer. So I think it's going to take a whole nother year for them really to get established and start having events and create, you know, money that potentially could help offset some components of, of education across our district. But it is still in the works, there's a good team that's working on it, attorney's been part of it, one's sitting right at the table, so, yeah, so we appreciate the efforts.
Excellent. Well, I guess I would just like to, again, thank everyone for coming. Thank you to all of our, our residents who, who showed up to share their thoughts and, and some non-residents, too. I, you know, I can't stress enough how this is like one of the most difficult things that we go through throughout the year. You know, you, you want to make everybody happy, and you want to, you know, make sure we're doing the right things for the town. So I, I appreciate, you know, everyone's goodwill and, and thoughts and prayers to help us to get through to the right, right number. At the end of the day, we have, I'm sure, more information that continues to come through, whether it's information on grants, you know, updates on the town side, as well as, you know, updates over here. So we'll, we'll all be sharpening our pencils and trying to stay on top of every last piece of information that can help us get through. Definitely want to thank our Board of Finance here, too, because this is right in the middle of like meeting after meeting after meeting, and, and all of our department heads who come in, you know, after a long day of work and come back to, to present, such as all of you. So thank you, I appreciate all the work that you guys put into it, and our technology group out there for, for hopefully keeping us live and people can hear us, so. Anyone have any other comments?
I want to thank the two students to spoke, because we're up here with their head in the numbers and talking about FTEs, and I think the student speaking helped us keep it real and make, and help us understand what we're dealing with. And I, I think it took a lot of courage for the two students to speak, and I really want to thank them a lot for that.
Very good point. I'm sorry to mention-
Yeah, I want to echo that, and I, I think one, one of the, the takeaways was there's still a lot of work to be done. There was some support system, but there needed to be more.
That's it? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Any opposed, abstentions, motion carries?